To the flag, in the highest states of America, and to the republic, for its spanners, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. Would you like to introduce yourself? We're really a little bit late here because of the coronavirus and trying to distance and space, everyone.
Absolutely. Good morning, everyone. My name's Chris Ballerini. I'm the Bucks County Treasurer.
Thank you. I didn't have my microphone on, so just to repeat, that was one of our row offices, Chris Ballerini, and I apologize, I didn't have that on. Moving on to the proclamations, today we have the 2020 Bucks County Poet Laureate, and Commissioner Harvey will read that, and then we will be able to enjoy a poem or two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas Jane Edna Muller of Peace Valley has earned the prestigious distinction of being the forty-fourth Bucks County Poet Laureate, continuing a literary tradition begun in nineteen seventy-seven that now stands as the longest-running program of its kind in Pennsylvania. And whereas Ms. Muller was selected from seventy-five entrants by two accomplished poets who served as judges in this year's annual contest, which is administered by Bucks County Community College, and which we are proud to sponsor. And whereas writing poetry has been a lifelong calling for Ms. Muller, who is inspired by life's fragility and her will to endure, her poems shed an intimate light on what she calls the connections, coincidences, and collisions of people, events, and objects, exploring and celebrating them in settings ranging from hospitals to nature, from cemeteries to one's own dreams. And whereas Ms. Muller is a Bucks County native, who has taught university-level English in China, has published a book of poems titled Broken Umbrellas, and has continued to work as a school counselor through the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. And whereas, in addition to her book, publications such as The Boston Globe, The School Valley Journal, and The River Heron Review have displayed Ms. Muller's poems. And whereas Ms. Muller was the 2016 winner of Bucks County's Main Street Voices Poetry Contest, has been nominated twice for a Pushcart Prize, and has been a finalist in the Robert Fraser Poetry Competition. Now therefore do we, the Board of Bucks County Commissioners, hereby recognize and congratulate Jane Edna Muller as the 2020 Bucks County Poet Laureate. In doing so, we commend Ms. Muller's talents and leadership in conveying the beauty of poetry to individual readers and the community at large. We encourage all citizens in Bucks County and beyond to turn to her poems for creative inspiration.
Thank you.
And we will have Ms. Muller, as well as Dr. Ethel Rankin of Bucks County Community College, come forward, so we can hear some of the poems from Ms. Muller.
Congratulations and thank you. If you want to use the microphone over there, that'd be great. Do you want to speak after Dr. Rankin? No, he's all yours.
I'm told I have permission to do this. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was born just a few blocks over from here, and so this is really pretty exciting. It's just wonderful. I'm a little bit speechless. I thanked Commissioner Deidre Rollama for all his work in human services, which I've spent most of my life in, and thank you. I'm just so grateful.
Thank you.
I have three poems to read. They say I'm from Peace Valley because I wanted to be specific about that, because I live over by Lake Delena, and the nature and the things in that area have really sunk into my writing. So the first poem is called "Sometimes Poems Spray From Onions." Sometimes poems spray from the bleeding purple onions I chop for dinner. Sometimes they wriggle between my dirty socks and towels as I sort black from green. Arrogant young poems lol in the sun, care less if we ever hear them, sloppy and delicious in their salty skins. Some poems are gathered beneath dry leaves, morels to beg from dense cold clay. Poems may fall unnoticed, the last snow flurry shaken loose from the empty cereal box of winter. Moldering poems drift in the punk scent of the Bradford pear, springing as births from autumn's rut. And tonight I hear thick-coated poems lightly crunching on bones in the woods. There's a lot of Peace Valley there. More of the lake is in "A Widow Weeds." A widow weeds beside the house that has become her husband. She's annoyed he hasn't shaved. She walks to the lake that has become her sister. They pour into each other. She tells the lake about termites that have eaten the backbone of her house, another husband in peril. She tells the lake about her son, who comes to stack wood, then leaves and leaves again. She tells the lake that her retriever didn't walk today because his breaths become too hard. She waits for the cool lake to tell her about geese who shatter the mirrored sky and its own tiresome filling and emptying. Did I say I was excited about this? This next poem is really apropos, because a couple of winters ago were really, really tough, if you remember, past last winter. A couple, were very tough, and you could get the sense that the animals were stressed. And so I wrote this. It's called Circling. On a raw stump far back behind the house, we offered the quiet gray heart and curled purple neck of the Christmas turkey. In the hard cold, the hill crackled underfoot, and stiff branches tinked like tin above the soft, blood-scented gift. Now, deep into January, dark Christmas lights swing idly from the bare stick bushes. The stove roars and still the house is chilled. Gathering wood from the far pile, convinced of certain suffering, we leave dog food and table scraps on the stump. In the crusted snow, we find trails of clawed tracks circling our home closer each night. Our tabbies thread behind the curtains, their pupils wide, staring out into the patient dark. And we just bought dog food for the storm. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ethel's coming up.
Thank you. We're just going to do a quick picture here. Are you on either side of it?
Put your light out.
Yep. Harvey, yeah, I think we better know, because we're... Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for your support.
Right, sure. Congratulations. We now have a public comment on any agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience? Commissioner Warren?
Just I'm sure you're aware that our ranks are shrinking with the recent passing of Commissioner Meredith last week. If you hadn't heard, Charlie Meredith, who was most proud probably of his work with the community college in preserving urban space, died over the weekend in Fager County. I have two quick... I read the article about the meeting y'all held, and I commend you for that. It never ceased to amaze me that commissioners meet to pass a $467 million budget, and not one person makes a peep. And you want to give $2,000 to the dog walk park, and six people will jump up and down about how it was crazy. But I want you to know, it wasn't for lack of try. I tried to get to your meeting, but I missed it, and by the time I got it all figured out, at twenty after, so thank you for holding the meeting. My other, my only question had to do with, for example, item twelve. Approved contract increase to reflect corrected unit price for purchasing of PPP supplies COVID-19 pandemic, county expense zero. Am I correct in assuming that whenever an article like that appears on your agenda, zero county dollars due to COVID, that that reflects the, by charging allowable expenses to $100 million in CARES Act funding received from the federal government to deal with the Corona pandemic earlier this year, that that's what that money is used for? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's the identifiable part?
Right.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood that.
Yeah.
And thank you.
And just to give you a little bit of background on that specifically, should have a thrombolex on our agenda? Is that the agenda? Number twelve is thrombolex? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just use that as an example, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, just to give you an idea, and some background, because we were kind of excited about this, this is a company not, like literally, a few miles from here that has invented or is in the process of inventing a device that can help clear out blood clots. And we know from, especially from the spring, that blood clots were one of the effects of COVID-19, which was leading to a lot of people being seriously ill and passing away. So they are a local company, and they actually, you know, developed these products, and, you know, we found out about it and purchased them to give to all six hospitals, so they could use them to, you know, to help people who might be suffering from that side effect from the virus. So it's a way of helping, obviously, a local business, you know, helping our hospitals, helping our residents, and using the CARES money to do all of that.
Very good, and I like that spending money here. And I use that as an example of overall COVID spending, but that was nice information. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for sharing. I did not realize that Commissioner Meredith had passed, and I appreciate your sharing. He cared a great deal about this county, even after he left office and stayed active with it. Any other, do we have any written or email public comment?
Yes, Commissioner, we have one. It is with respect to three items on the consent agenda. Items fifteen, which is housing and community development, letters J, K, and L, all of which concern Sellersville Senior Apartments LLC. The comment, Commissioners, is submitted by Sean Kelly of Telford, and it reads as follows. "Thank you, Commissioners, for your continued support of Sellersville Senior Apartments, an important affordable housing community that will activate a vacant brownfield in the Sellersville borough and create a vibrant, walkable community for Bucks County residents. Signed, Sean Kelly, Dan McKee, and Fred Shea."
Terrific. That's great news. When you started to announce, there was public comment on that, I was a little worried, and so it's great to hear something positive. Thank you. Anything else on the, that's it?
No, Chris.
Okay. We are now on to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from March eighteenth, 2020, there was a correction, actually, to those minutes, the approval of the minutes from December second, 2020, and items one to twenty-four B, the consent agenda being the more routine items that there are no issues on. But is there any questions from any of the Commissioners before?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Perfect. And moving to the regular agenda. So the first, we have a number of things on this that are going to require a roll call. The first vote, roll call vote, I'm sorry, the first thing under Consumer Protection Waits and Measures is Resolution Number One sixty-five, approving a resolution related to the Ordinance One sixty-five establishing the amount of annual license permit fees for commercial weighing and providing for a yearly increase of five percent for a period ending on December thirty-first, 2025. Any questions or concerns about this? Any issues? Okay, well, we'll do a roll call vote then. I'll ask the solicitor to call that.
Sure. So Commissioner, we, so we will do the roll call on item A first, which is the ordinance, and that, just for the record, was publicly advertised, posted on the website, made available to the public. And so One sixty-five, if enacted, would then allow item number twenty-five to be passed.
And I think, does it have to be a motion first, actually, I think, to approve that? So I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance One sixty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we'll do the roll call vote now. Commissioner Marsdakla?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Deidre Rollama?
Aye.
Okay, there we go. That one was passed. Number twenty-six, under purchasing, we have several things under here.
I guess then you could vote on twenty-five.
Do you want to do that separately, or with everything? Is there preference?
If we could, I mean, I know I see Mike Bannon here, because I think Department of Waits and Measures is one of the departments in this county that probably has one of the biggest impacts on county residents' everyday life, and they have absolutely no idea, and it's actually one of our smaller departments. In addition to the consumer protection things that go on, just, I think it's, I think it's a good chance for people to find out a little bit about what they do. I know Mr. Bannon can sure give just a quick update in terms of the waits and measures part, in terms of what his staff does when in every gas station and supermarket and, you know, all the other businesses, so.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you. As the Commissioners know, and for the viewers out there, the Bucks County Waits and Measures Department inspects weighing and measuring devices throughout Bucks County. This includes gas pumps at gas stations, home heating oil trucks, barcode scanners, among other things. So we're very busy. We did over nine thousand inspections last year in two thousand and nineteen, and this will help us improve for residents of Bucks County to ensure that they're getting what they pay for out there. In particular, gasoline and home heating oil is very important to folks, but this really protects, excuse me, residents' money, and that's what we're looking to do here.
And just, I know you and I have talked about this before, but just for the people out there, when you go to measure, let's say, a gallon of gas, to make sure that it's actually a gallon, that people are paying for a gallon, they're getting a gallon, what amount is that pump allowed to be off before it has to be fixed?
Great question. Basically, if a gallon of gas is off by a teaspoon, we will take that gas pump out of service until they correct it. So it gets really close. If you think of a gallon of milk and take a teaspoon out of it, it's not much, but that's what we're measuring for out there.
Right. Thank you.
So it really does affect the pocketbook of residents in Bucks County.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I think we've gone with you before, some of us too, to do this, and so every time I'm filling up, I'm thinking of you, Mike, and I look, and I realize I did take it all for granted before, but now, you know, I really do appreciate it, and I'm sure this whole county does, every time they're filling up, so.
Well, thank you. I mean, I'm really proud of the crew that I work with. I think we have really good employees and staff out there that have a very good system. And the key to success is to be consistent on inspection and work with businesses to resolve it. And most of the time, it's bad maintenance of their equipment, not for our, but those dealers are always for our, too.
Terrific. Any other questions?
No. Thank you.
So I don't remember us doing that before, where we had to do both a roll call vote and a separate vote. Is that what you want us to do, though? Do it separately as an issue on the agenda?
Well, so now that you have passed the ordinance, which codifies what the county has done in the past, you can do a separate vote on the superproduction item or do your whole regular agenda.
Okay. Is there any preference for the board?
No, I mean, I think there's some good things to talk about with, well, twenty-five. Obviously, we just dealt with Mr. Bannon helped us with that. Twenty-six and twenty-seven, I think, are all good items.
Yeah, I'm going to do those. I just didn't, I was just trying to see if you want to do a vote on number twenty-five, but I think we did that by the roll call, so thank you. We appreciate your being here, and we'll move to twenty-six.
Thank you, Mike.
No, I think we do, yeah, we do. It's two different things. Yeah, one's the ordinance.
Okay, then is there a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve item twenty-five.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the first thing on twenty-six, purchasing, Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC in Louisville, Kentucky, approve the contract to provide natural gas for high-volume transportation services, Pico TSF accounts, and low-volume Pico GC accounts. This is at $2.80 a decathon. Am I saying it correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm going to read all these, and then we can, we can talk about them. Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC, approve a natural gas basis contract for six high-volume transportation services, Pico TSF accounts, and that's at .645 decathon. Providence Energy Consulting LLC Media, Pennsylvania, approve contract increase and extension to provide consulting services for purchase of electricity and natural gas, .01 a thermometer, and .001 a kilowatt hour. UGI Energy Services LLC at a Whis, why are you missing? Pennsylvania, approve natural gas basis contract for twenty-five county and library accounts that use low-volume transportation services, .580 a decathon, and WGL Energy Services Incorporated, Vienna, Virginia, approve a contract to purchase electricity for the county's one hundred and forty-one accounts at .04925 a kilowatt hour. Are there any questions? Maureen from purchasing is here, or any information anybody needs?
I think a lot, it's important to note, a lot of these are, we're seeing a decrease in the price of energy, whether it's electricity or natural gas, and totaling it up, about a hundred and, a little over $104,000 in terms of decrease from last year to last year's rates of this year's, assuming energy usage stays the same through 2020.
Good. Any questions? Anything you need us to know, Maureen?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve items twenty-six, A through E?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Workforce development. First is Bucks County Community College, a contract to provide out-of-school youth services for at-risk youth aged sixteen to twenty-four through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act in the amount of $650,000. Another contract with the community college to approve a contract to provide in-school youth services for youth fourteen to twenty-one through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act in the amount of $227,370. I guess that's how, is that how that's supposed to be? An extra number in there. And see, with the Pennsylvania Biotechnology Center of Bucks County, approving a resolution and a cooperative agreement for the redevelopment assistance capital program, an RCAP grant for the expansion of the Pennsylvania Biotechnology Center of Bucks County. And Marjorie McKevitt, our COO, do you want to tell us about these?
I indeed would like to talk about it. So the first two, A and B, for the community college, these two grant programs are run out of the U.S. Department of Labor through the community college, or, I'm sorry, through the county to the community college, and they provide funding for out-of-school and in-school youth, two separate targeted populations, age raging between fourteen and twenty-four years old. The funds will be used for tutoring and internship programs with companies, and will be used over the course of the next year. And the community college receives this funding somewhat annually, but this year, the funding has increased, so we're very fortunate and happy about that, considering the effects of the pandemic and the opportunities for this at-risk group. The Pennsylvania Biotech Center has received, this will be the fourth grant, for a project that they are doing in Buckingham Township. Right now, they have two buildings that house a couple hundred scientists, and the building that they're going to build with this RACP grant is going to bring together those two buildings. It's a thirty-seven thousand square foot building, three stories, and then they're also going to expand the parking lot to accommodate the addition of the building. That building will, will be used for refrigerator space, which we would hope to have been built by now, potentially to house some of the vaccines that'll be coming our way, but they do have another refrigerator space that they'll be able to use for that. So we're looking forward to this expansion. It'll bring more jobs to Bucks County and have an enormous economic impact on the county as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt number twenty-seven, A, B, and C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Budget adjustments, number C, of the regular agenda. Mr. Bascolli, would you like to? And then don't leave, because we'll need you for the next item.
Thank you, Commissioner. The budget suggestions presented to the Board today, number twenty-one, would recognize the revenue the county would receive from the sale of the pretreatment plant at the Sheminy Manor Center and the infrastructure to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority that was approved earlier this year. And adjustment number twenty-two would allow for the expense of the settlement for the Tahoe versus Bucks County agreement out of the self-insurance fund. Twenty-one is $10 million of revenue, twenty-two is $10,108,400 of expense.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bascolli?
I think it's just important to note that the water, the sewer treatment plant that we sold was something that, you know, was the only operation of its kind the county was, had, and our general services was operating, and talking with Kevin Spencer, head of general services. It was clearly something that they were, you know, they didn't relish having to work with it all the time. It was not something that they were comfortable really doing, and they were not, they were not sad to see it go. It is literally a stone's throw from Bucks County Water and Sewer Building Headquarters, and so it did make sense to have it transferred to them. They're willing to purchase it, and, you know, we're using the $10 million we... We didn't have to sort of dip into our savings, didn't have to use taxpayer money. In addition, we could also take a look at some of the ideas in terms of saving. This is now one less thing our general services has to budget for in terms of all of the chemicals and the equipment they have to buy, the time they have to, you know, spend on the workers who have to, you know, maintaining it can now be put onto other operations. And so I think it's a pretty efficient use, allowing Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority to deal with a sewer issue, and also allows us and our staff to focus more on things that they're able to focus on, and it brings money in that we could immediately, you know, use to pay off the suit.
Thank you. Any other questions? So is there a motion for adjustment number twenty-one and twenty-two to the operating budget?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, this is the best time of every year, the budget for the next year, so, Mr. Bascolli, if you want to... if you want to share a little bit with us about the 2021 county budget, the tax levy, and appropriations.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. First, I want to thank all the departments, department heads, their fiscal staff, divisional leaders, the court departments and their fiscal staff, court administration, the judges, the row officers and their fiscal staff. Without them, we don't get to a balanced budget. We don't get a good operational budget for the following year, and especially I want to thank Marjorie McKevitt, our COO, and the Board of Commissioners for their guidance, their support, and their confidence in finance, and our budget analyst in constructing the budget. So thank you very much. So the preliminary budget was, was basically, and we discussed this last week, an operational budget to show the operations for fiscal year 2021. The final budget is overlaid with the expectation that the CARES funding that the county received for this year will help us not only complete the things that we need to do this year in terms of dealing with the pandemic, but put us in a better possession, position for next year. Operationally, it was expected that we were going to finish this year without CARES with about $30 million in the fund balance. With the CARES funding and the allowance, the eligibility to cover salaries in the public safety sector and the health sector of the government, I'm anticipating that we're going to finish 2020 with $50 million in our fund balance. So that's our starting balance for 2021. Operationally, things basically stayed the same as the preliminary budget. There is going to be a similar structural deficit of $7.8 million that is going to be drawn on the, on the general fund, leaving $42.5 million in fund balance at the end of next year, 2021. So again, thank you for your guidance and your confidence. I can answer any questions that you may have in terms of what's in the budget or any member of the public.
Okay. Is there questions on the budget?
All of us have been involved in different budgets, township level and county level for Commissioner Marsaglia, state level, of course, for Commissioner Deidre Alamo. When does the budget process start? For those people who obviously don't know, I mean, here we are talking about the budget. We had a meeting last week, and so when does all of the preparations start for a budget?
So finance starts in July. We ready the application that we use for departments to ask for their requests in July. This year, we were a little bit delayed because not only were we dealing with COVID, but we were also dealing with the implementation of a new budget application that we used. Questicade is our new application. We went through an implementation this year and we started a little bit late, but typically we start in July. We, we make the application available for departments to enter their request in August. Finance reviews in September. We meet with departments, divisions, court administration, and the row offices in October. Construct a preliminary budget for the commissioners to review in November, release that preliminary budget usually before Thanksgiving, and then put the final touches on and address any deficits, any, any impact that it might have on, on next year's budget 21, and then commissioners adopt the budget at the second meeting in December. So that's, I mean, that's the same process that we've been following for the past 30 years, so, and that's basically the process that we go through.
Yeah, and I think it's, for, you know, most people, of course, it's easy to get lost in the fact that we, in this room, almost all of us in this room, you know, see this process working out in some way, shape, or form, and so we're familiar with it, and this is just, oh, yeah, sure, this is the way it is. At the township level, we started in August, similar, you know, a little about a month later, you know, after what you did, a similar timetable. But for the people who are not part of county government and aren't paying that much attention, because, because obviously there's other things to do, you know, I think it's important for them to know just what the timetable is and how this works, and there's a huge amount of work that goes on. Obviously, you, so thank you for all the work you've put in. You've thanked everybody else, but, and we'll thank them as well. Your office and the offices of all the agencies and departments, everything that goes in, Ms. McKevitt as well, you know, it's, it's certainly, you know, it's an enormous undertaking for a budget this size, a county this size, all the operations we have. I think, you know, certainly, we came in, as you said, with a structural deficit, which has been there for years. The county's run at a deficit for most of the past 10 years. That was something that we knew coming in. The transition committee of outside professionals who took a look at it, found that and realized that there, you know, there is this, this, you know, structural deficit that we're just spending more than we're taking in. And I was hoping to really sort of go after that this year and really kind of cut into that, and between the pandemic and the election and everything else that was going on, we, you know, I'm happy about the fact that we sort of maintained it. It didn't sort of, it didn't get bigger. I think also it's, it's a compliment to, you know, we have four brand-new row offices, officers who are working with their offices for the first time, putting budgets together for the very first time in offices they just came into, and they obviously had things they wanted to do, and we know there's some modernization that has to happen in a lot of facets. So I'm really hopeful, and I know we've talked about this separately, that we can really cut into, spend 2021 really focusing on ways to try and get this structural deficit under control, you know, because we, you know, we're in the stage now where, you know, because of the economic situation in the country, we don't want to be raising taxes. But that's not a sustainable model, quite frankly. It just isn't. And so I want to try and limit what we can do. My 17th year now as an elected official, I've never raised property taxes. It's, and so I didn't come here to do that, but I also, I did come here to run a good government, and I think we're doing that, but we also want to make sure we're fiscally responsible. So just thinking forward, you know, there are some tough decisions we're going to have to make, and I know, we know that, but for the public out there, you know, we're just, we are focused on this. This is, it's good news in terms of people's wallets for this year. We want to try and make sure we can be as conscious of that in years moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, this is almost like the commissioner's comments at the end. I mean, first, I want to thank Dave and our COO, Margie, for the terrific work that you did putting this together this year. I don't think anybody would have thought back in March, April, May, going through what we were going through, that we would be able to put a budget together with no tax increase. And I really think that that's the big, the big news today. We are, we are not raising taxes. And even though we have a structural deficit that I know might need to be addressed in the future, going through what people are going through right now in Bucks County, families, individuals, businesses, I mean, the three commissioners got together and we said, we don't want to raise taxes this year. It's not the right thing to do with people going through what we're doing, and I just think it's pretty amazing without raising taxes. And you look at our ending fund balance, Dave, right, which is 42.5 million plus. I mean, when, the question, I mean, I don't know if I know the answer, but the rating services, when they look at the financial stability of Bucks County, I mean, I think the fund balance is one of the things that they, they look at. I mean, and when they see that fund balance of $42.5 million compared to what we have last year, I can't help but think they're going to look on that favorably as when it comes to our ratings. Isn't that true, Dave?
Yes, that's true.
Yeah. I mean, I, I just think it's a terrific budget for the people of Bucks County. And again, I think the big news is we're not, we're not raising taxes. We are not raising taxes on anybody this year. And I just think that's a tremendous accomplishment, especially the county going through what we went through and all the added expenses. And I know we had the federal money, the CARES money, and that certainly was a big help to address the impacts from the, from the virus. But, but that's not the whole, the whole solution. I mean, we really worked really, really hard, the work on this budget to make sure it was financially stable and fiscally responsible, and I think we were able to do that. I want to thank you, Dave, and Margie, and everybody else who had anything to do with putting this together. Thank you.
Thanks. And just to be clear, we now have 10%, which is a recommended amount to be put aside, or about that?
We have about 9%.
Well, it's almost 10%, right? So, so close that I'm rounding up.
Is that we were moving closer to that direction?
Right. It's been a long time since we've been there. So thank you. And I know you donned your black hat in August and made everybody in the county mad at you because of your, your tough stance on the budget, but you can take it off now and relax. I know that was sort of your accounting season, but thank your staff and thank you for tolerating all that and lots of calls and emails for me and everyone else too. So thank you. I just wanted to ask the solicitor, do you want to do this in three separate roll call votes?
Sure, I think we can do one motion and then three votes. So is there a motion?
One motion for I two, I two and three? Is that how you want to do it?
Yeah, you can do one motion, and then we'll do three votes.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve items D1, 2, and 3?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's do D1 first. Commissioner Marsaglia.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Deidre, Commissioner Deidre Alamo.
Aye.
Okay. D2, Commissioner Marsaglia.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Deidre Alamo.
Aye.
D3, Commissioner Marsaglia.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Deidre Alamo.
Aye.
All items passed unanimously.
Terrific. Thank you. Moving to the personnel agenda. Is there a motion to approve the personnel agenda for December 16?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or comments about the personnel actions? See none? A couple board appointments today?
We have two board appointments for the Workforce Development Board, a three-year term. We appointed a lot of people over the past couple of meetings. A lot of the terms were coming up. This, again, is a board that is set up through state guidance. It works with the county to help develop programs, to train workers, match workers to businesses who are looking for employees. It is made up of a variety of people, different backgrounds, but most of the backgrounds are people from the business field, also some people from education, the community college, for example, the county, as well as other government, the state agencies, et cetera. But there is, there is a need for people who are involved in labor and specifically in training laborers. And so at this point, to fill the gap we have right now, I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Dominic Roberto for a term ending 11/1/2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
And for the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, a five-year term. There is a term that ends on January 1, and we don't meet until January 4. I think the Water and Sewer Authority actually meets at roughly the same time on that day, and so we have to appoint somebody now pending that vacancy. And so I'll nominate Mr. Brian Allen for a term that'll begin on January 1, 2021, extend to January 7, 2026.
I'll second that motion.
Someone comment?
Sure.
I'm going to be voting no on this appointment, item number one. And I want to just state for the record that it's not a reflection on the person who's going on the board. Actually, I've known Brian for a long time. I actually was a basketball coach at one time, and he was actually, played on my team when he was in seventh and eighth grade. The reason I will be voting no is because the person who's coming off, her name is Stacy Mahalan, has served her term on the board very faithfully. I think she's done a terrific job, and so my no vote will reflect her being removed from the board more so than the person that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed? No?
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Okay, moving to other civics. I wanted to just clean up a little bit of the traditional ones that we've done that are still out there. So if it's okay, I'm going to, I'll say them all, and then we'll see if everybody's okay with that. First, the Bucks County 4-H and the annual $1,200 contribution. The Bucks County Association of the Blind, the annual $1,600 contribution. Delaware Canal, a $2,500 contribution. Fire Professionals Aiding Children, that's the fire pack, it's $3,200. And the Middletown Grange Fair that still needs to go on even though it wasn't able to be held this year, and our annual contribution of $2,500. So is everybody okay with that one motion? I'm happy to make that as a motion for them.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We can have the chief operating officers report next.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to echo Mr. Bascola and Commissioner Harvey's comments on the budget preparation. Our departments worked very hard and row offices and court administration on preparing the budget, and we were grateful for their time and effort on doing that. And we're looking forward to 2021 with the fund balance and the projects that we will be working on and carrying over from 2020 forward. We, I just want to make mention of the impending snow and weather event. We are monitoring it closely with our emergency management staff, with court administration, and we'll be making recommendations to the commissioners as the day progresses into tomorrow, and to stay tuned, and we will keep you updated as, as the weather progresses throughout the day. And that is all I need to report today.
Terrific. Any questions for the COO? Okay, the solicitor's report? Mr. Harv?
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the great joys of this job has been getting to help the priorities of this new administration, which include issues like focusing on diversity here in the county. That's a project that has really been led by Ms. McKevitt and our new project diversity officer, Bernard Briggs. And part of that approach has included the administration providing to all 2,400 employees the walking while black training, which has received a lot of really positive reviews in terms of making employees better educated, better able to navigate situations in an ever, everly increasingly diverse community. These kinds of trainings unfortunately have come under attack by the outgoing administration in Washington, and the president had issued an executive order 13950, which was an attempt to coerce organizations into dropping these kinds of trainings like walking while black, threatening the removal of federal funding for any contractors who were doing this kind of work. And because of the reputation of this administration as supporting these kind of programs, we were asked to join a legal challenge to, to, to stop this executive order, which we saw as unconstitutional. And I think we were the first public entity in Pennsylvania to join this, this effort. We were joined by the city of Philadelphia, the city of Pittsburgh, and about 20 other cities and counties across the country, bringing a federal challenge to the executive order. And that challenge is pending after we filed our amicus brief about a week and a half ago. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Commissioner comments?
From, from the budget, because I think that's the big issue today. And again, thank everybody that was involved in putting this together, Dave and Margie especially, and everybody else in all the departments. I really think it's a, a solid budget for the, for the people of Bucks County with no tax increase. So I think it's a terrific budget. And the only other thing, a little birdie told me that somebody's got a birthday on Monday, so I would like to just wish that person a happy birthday, a little bit early.
Thank you. Shortest day of the year. Somehow that happens. Thank you very much, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. A few things, actually, just want to talk, begin, the town, the county was contacted by the township of Warwick about a concern they have, and they, they were asking to send some representatives here to talk with the commissioners because of space constraints. And they, they were asking to send some representatives here to talk with the commissioners because of space constraints. But we, we asked them, we were kind of aware of their concerns. They did send a letter, which we told them that we would read, which deals with an issue in their township specifically, but it's related to a county park. And so this is from, signed by Judith Algejo, who is chair of the Warwick Township Board of Supervisors, dated December 7th. Dear Commissioners Marsaglia, Harvey and Deidre Alamo, writing on behalf of the Warwick Township Board of Supervisors regarding ongoing issues with fox hunts organized by Huntingdon Valley Hunt and held regularly in Dark Hollow Park. As a point of reference, Dark Hollow Park is a county park in Warwick Township. The fox hunts are a significant disturbance for our community and a confusing and archaic activity for 2020. For background, fox hunts involve releasing packs of dogs and horseback riders which chase, trap and kill fox for sport. While the hunts may start in Dark Hollow Park, the dogs run at large throughout the community, across streets and through private property. In short, we are asking that the hunts be discontinued in Warwick Township. We understand history, the history and sport of fox hunting, however, it's not appropriate, it's not appropriate in a developed area. Warwick Township is a suburban community of 15,000 residents with an expanding commercial corridor and busy streets. Between November 22nd and 23rd, Warwick Township Police responded to six complaints of dogs running at large throughout our township. They've attached the police reports. The time and resources spent responding to these calls is incomprehensible and irresponsible. Since the hunt organizers obtained a county permit for their fox hunting sport, the township is left without authority or reimbursement for police activities. Any other event organized activity in Warwick Township would require a special event permit reviewed and issued by the township where we could place reasonable restrictions and obtain fees for service. We receive no authority to review or authorize this activity and receive no notice the event is scheduled. Furthermore, Warwick Township, like many Bucks County municipalities, has leash laws which we regularly enforce in our public parks and trails. However, during fox hunts, the leash laws have become unenforceable. It's a struggle to explain to residents why leashes are required for a single sedentary dog in a park, but not required for a pack of dogs aggressively chasing foxes. We have written to the previous Bucks County Commissioners numerous times regarding these hunts. The last time was in 2016, following an incident where a pack of dogs attacked and injured a Warwick resident and her dog on her own private property. What we have, and they've asked us to take a look at the evidence they sent us and the information. And we have discussed this and at the commissioner's level, the Bucks County Park and Rec Committee does meet in January. We obviously ask people to sit on these different boards and authorities to, to give advice to the county in terms of how to run our operations. And we are, we have forwarded this information to the Park and Rec Board and the head of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Mitchell. And they're going to bring it up at their meeting in January. We want to hear their thoughts on this. Certainly, you know, as it makes sense to me, I mean, as a township supervisor, we pass leash laws in Falls Township to protect people from, from animals that were, you know, kind of getting away from homeowners and, or owners. So that part of it makes sense. And the special event permit is certainly something I'm familiar with at a township level as well. So we certainly apologize to the people of Warwick who have been inconvenienced by these, the recent hunt and the ones in the past. And we'll, we'll wait to hear from our Park and Rec Board in terms of what they advise moving forward.
Thank you, thank you. And I just had two quick things, well. Pardon me?
I had some other stuff too.
Do you want to go back to that?
Finish my stuff, or you want to talk about the hunt or no?
I don't want to talk about the hunt. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I have. I did, sorry.
I thought you were all done, I'm sorry.
No, a couple of things. We do also want to make note, our community development or community and economic development department or division, I should say, and the Planning Commission have worked out a shopping map that is going to be available online. It is sort of interactive map where you can search for different businesses that do different kinds of activities, whether it's, you know, restaurants or hotels or industries or retail. It is going to be up on our website. We're working now in terms of putting it in the proper place. You can zoom in on wherever you are, look around you and look on, click on the little buttons to find a business near you. It's something we're doing to try and help make people aware of different stores that might be near them, to find things they're looking to find. It is, there are a lot of businesses represented, hundreds and hundreds of them. I'm sure there are businesses we haven't gotten to that put on there. This is just the beginning of this map. We will certainly make improvements to it as we go through and make improvements to the entire web presence of this county. But I want to thank Deanna Giorno, as well as Evan Stone and Planning Commission, and the people who work on all the little, you know, do all the magic that makes the internet happen here at the township, at the county level. It's really kind of impressive. They put it together pretty quickly. And we also have talked as a county about moving forward into 2021 on a couple of levels. Certainly, we recognize and we've spent about $30 million in CARES money to help our businesses, different types and varieties throughout the county this year as they struggle with all the difficulties the coronavirus has brought to us. We know that there certainly are some businesses that are less than cooperative. Unfortunately, we've seen that throughout the year. One of the things that we are looking to do to recognize the difficulties, especially that restaurants have had over this year, there is a fee that restaurants have to pay every year for the health department to come in and do their inspections. So this is something that we are going to be waiving for 2021 for restaurants so that they don't have to pay that fee to have the health department come in and do their inspections. That waiver, however, will not apply to businesses that are not complying with the governor's order. So if there are businesses out there who have decided to stay open after the governor's order, you know, the, the fee that you normally pay every year will be in effect moving into 2021.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of things as, as we're talking about businesses and COVID and whatnot. I think my fellow commissioners would join me in agreeing that we've received far too many emails and calls over the past few days since the governor's order went into effect. You know, both sides, people who are upset about the order, people who are upset with people who are not following the order. And that's what I just wanted to speak about today. I'm a gym member. I go to restaurants. It is not fair in many ways that your gym and your restaurant and whatnot is closed right now. But it's very important that we all be fair to one another. And so the governor said they need to be closed and they need to be closed. So I would encourage those of you who have stayed open that you need to close now. Our health department will be contacting you. But more importantly, we are sending a letter to the governor today to try to get some specific assistance in finding out how we are supposed to enforce this order. We know that there are state police that are supposed to enforce it, possibly our local police, but we do want some more direction from the governor on that. So for those of you who have been writing and saying, what are you going to do about this gym or this restaurant that is still serving people inside? We are asking the governor for some assistance on that. So we will be, have more information on that, I hope, within a couple of days. The second thing I wanted to say is unfortunately, because of COVID tonight, which is one of my favorite events, is the 30th Annual Tree of Hope lighting that we have always had here at either the administration building or the courthouse. But it will be virtual tonight. You can still sign up to be on a Zoom for the Tree of Hope virtual. It's treeofhope.biz. That's treeofhope.biz. This is important to so many people who are in recovery, but also to the many people who've lost someone to the disease of addiction. It's an important and profound event, and it'll be difficult to have it, you know, virtually. But I still think it's an important event and I encourage you to attend. And I'd also just like to share that our Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission and our Mental Health Department has some ideas for the holidays. I think we have this up on the website. And I wanted to share them because this is such an important time this year to take care of ourselves, not just because it's a holiday, but because of everything that we have had to navigate this last year with the navigation and the, of the COVID virus and the isolation that goes with it. And so some of the things they have recommended is that we all exercise, that we meditate, that we get good sleep, that we practice a healthy diet, that we find small ways to find joy out there with, with people. Last night, I took a walk and decided to do my own vote of who in my neighborhood had the best lights. So it was a small thing, but it did, it did, you know, kind of make me feel better for a little while. Make sure that you do something to pay it forward every day for someone else, and that'll help you. For those of you who are in recovery, make sure that you reach out to sponsors, to friends and to, for your spiritual help during this time. And that's all I have to say. Yes.
Just on Diane's comment about the Tree of Hope. And just a good job that our drug and alcohol people, led by Diane Rosetti, do here in helping people access treatment when they want it. And our poet laureate this morning, one of her poems was named Circling. And that's a term that I've been aware of and kind of use for people who are in an addiction, whether it be from drugs or alcohol. Because they get to a point in their life where they're almost at rock bottom and they're starting to circle by doing research or maybe showing up for an assessment and getting an assessment and not going back or going into treatment and staying a day and leaving. And they call, in, in the recovery field, they call that circling. And I've actually got a young man right now that I've been, been trying to help get into treatment and he's just not ready. And he texts me every once in a while, you know, what, where should I do? You know, and I try to help him, but he's just not ready to go. And a lot of times, that's much more difficult around the holidays because it's hard for people to try to break that cycle of addiction over the holidays. And then after the holidays and the new year, you get a lot of people that are looking for help. So for all those people that out there that might be kind of like circling, looking for help, where do I go? Help is available. It's available through the county. We can help you if you just give us a call, whether you get ahold of the commissioners or call the number for the drug and alcohol people here in the county. We're here to help you and help is available. And you can do it if you want to, but you've got to take that first step. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all very important. Is there any brief public comments? Is there anything online?
No, Commissioner.
Okay. It seems none. Is there? Happy holiday. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a very happy new year. And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.